Special meeting in the Fall River School Committee for Thursday, February 10th. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agio, Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Mr. Harp?
Here.
Ms. Larabee?
Here.
Ms. Peraro?
Here.
Ms. Rogers?
Here.
Mary Cooley?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. This is a special meeting to review the roles and responsibilities of the Fall River School Committee. We're so happy to have Glenn Kuchar down from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees to give us a review of the bylaws. I do want to acknowledge the fact that I will be attending another event and I will not be able to stay for the whole thing, so I don't want anyone to think I'm walking out on Glenn. It's very important. I have taken his class before, and he does a great job, so I'll turn it over to Glenn.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good to see you again. Good to be back in Fall River. I hope I don't slip and say it's New Bedford, because I did that before. It got me in trouble. So, for the purpose of clarity, I'm going to speak with my mask down, but one of the challenges with masks is... So, we do it this way. This is a general presentation. Please stop me with any questions that you have. But I do want to tell you that one of the things we do when we orient people on roles and responsibilities of the superintendents and the school committees is to talk about the fact that we prioritize student achievement. We hope you do too. We try to use school committee meetings as a vehicle to build credibility. The public that watches on TV gets a lot of information from you. There are a lot of important discussions, questions that are raised that don't get heard if they're not articulated at a school committee meeting, so it's important for gaining the public support. Try to talk about some of the things that get in the way. And I want to make one thing very clear: dissent and disagreement are part of what we do. We disagree, we argue. I try to encourage you to do it civilly. We'll talk a little bit about that, but having a good discussion with different points of view is a very important thing at the school committee meeting. I'm going to skip the role of the chair just for a second, but I do want to emphasize a couple of points, and I will be getting to them. Your role as a board member is as a member of the board. Individual school committee members do not have individual authority, with the exception of the chair, who has the authority to run the meeting, and with the exception of anybody who gets the authority from the body. So, for example, from time to time, you might be named the agent of the school committee for signing a contract, or you might be designated a special committee member or a special research project or something that you'd be taking on from the committee. But it's the committee as a body that gives directions to the superintendent, and the committee is a body that makes its decisions. We're going to emphasize things like your fiduciary responsibilities, to budget prudently, to act as a member of the body, to appreciate the chain of command. Now, I mentioned earlier that I was first elected 50 years ago. Fifty years ago, every single personnel action had to be approved by the school committee. All the appointments, all of the transfers, everything had to go through the school committee. That changed in 1993, and personnel authority was given to the superintendent for schools in the same way that the mayor has the authority over the municipal departments. And, for example, you may see things happening at elected boards, but the authority of the mayor and the authority of the superintendent are discreet, and they are defined in law. If you attempt to undermine that authority, you could find yourself in trouble with the Ethics Commission, and we'll talk a little bit about what some of those concerns were. So, you want to be pretty careful, and we'll talk about a lot of those things. And the chain of command now has authority in law, as I'll explain a little bit later. Then we want to talk a little bit about confidentiality and privacy. Do any of you work in an area where the people you serve have the expectation of privacy? What...
I'm a caseworker at the welfare department.
Okay, caseworker.
I'm a therapist.
Huh?
I'm a mental health therapist.
A mental health... Okay. You understand attorney. You understand patient-to-client privilege. You understand client privilege. The same privacy rights apply to students, and parents, and employees. So, there will be times when something will happen to an employee of the district, and the superintendent may not be able to discuss it with you for a number of reasons. We've had some cases in other communities. I think you probably read about them, where a student might have been victimized by a member of the faculty, and the superintendent explains, "We're dealing with this. We can't talk about it." That's because she can't talk about another person's child without the permission of the other person's child's parents and guardians. If it's a teacher who is alleged to have done something inappropriate, that teacher has privacy rights under the collective bargaining agreement. Or if it's the case of a bad teacher who doesn't teach well, that person has privacy rights under the evaluation system. So, there will be times when rumors will run amok, and the superintendent will not be able to tell you precisely what's happening because of the privacy rights involved. It's a hard thing to get used to, but we've had some significant things coming up, and of course, sometimes our friends in the media don't understand, "What do you mean, you can't tell me? What are you covering up?" Covering up anything, except she doesn't want the district to get sued for violating people's privacy rights. We've got some emerging issues, as you might expect. Dealing with COVID, dealing with masks. It's now been tossed back to the local communities. It's going to be challenging for all of us. Vaccinations, critical race theory, flags, a lot of those issues are going to be coming up before the school committee. I don't know whether you've had crowds coming to your school committee meetings on some of these issues. I hope you don't, but you may see some. We've had some meetings disrupted around the country. There have been meetings that have been disrupted. It's been a concern. Student social and emotional well-being has been a big topic for school committee members. Equity, diversity, inclusion, big topics. Big topics for some, bad topics for others, and some of these arguments are being played out. If you haven't had the critical race theory discussion yet, I can only tell you that I'm from Cambridge, Massachusetts. I was present at the creation of political correctness back in 1970, when they first started canceling people. The people who developed critical race theory were able to make it successful as a topic because they invited everybody to the table, they had everybody involved in the discussion, they didn't shut anybody up, but they did play by the rules of civil discourse. And when they did that, people realized, "Oh, we've been doing this for decades." So, it's not something that people need to fear. The same thing would be true with, you know, if you have a rational conversation about vaccination, about flags, even social and emotional learning has come under fire from some. Don't be afraid to have a public forum, be the place with the table, and talk these things out so people can hear over and over again what it is. I talked about privacy and confidentiality. We're going to talk a little bit about public records and public records complaints. And we'll talk about the Department of Education. I will give the commissioner a lot of credit. He's really trying to change the culture. So, you know, it's like people that have been fighting with people for years. We really hope that we'll be able to develop at least a state of détente and not be complaining about the department all the time. Four major principles to keep in mind. The chair is the servant of the assembly, not the master. So, the responsibility of the chair is to make sure that the people in the room know what's happening, and that the people outside of the room know what's happening. So, the chair is sort of the play-by-play announcer for the school committee meetings, for those people who watch it on television. And the majority of the school committee can overrule the chair with a majority vote. If you propose an amendment and someone says the amendment's out of order and you think it's in order, you can always ask the majority to do that, because the chair is the servant of the body. The agenda is the property of the body. So, if you want something discussed at a school committee meeting, the majority of the school committee can discuss... You can discuss the Ukraine if you want to. It's your meeting, it's a public meeting, and in Massachusetts, freedom of speech is freedom of speech. Stronger protection than even the federal constitution. The authority of the school committee lies with the body, not with an individual. I mentioned that earlier. And people in the school district have specific authority to do things like manage the budget, implement policies, deal with the day-to-day operations, control most of the personnel decisions, in fact, almost all the personnel decisions, is discreet through law. And I raise this because the National School Boards Association has raised this as the number-one issue raised by superintendents around the country, and that is that individuals who give assignments to staff, unless they're authorized by the board, are violating protocols and policy and even the law. I once served with an individual who spoke for 45 minutes to an empty room. The same individual had a different idea at least once or twice a meeting. In order to get the business done, this member would propose something, and we'd refer it to the superintendent for a report. And finally, the superintendent took me aside one night and said, "I have 70 items that you've referred to me. Who do you think writes these reports? I don't have a big staff. Give us a break." It's called vanity time, when nobody wants to do it, but somebody tells the superintendent to do it. Just be mindful, somebody's going to be distracted to do that work, and individual members, if they're to assign something to the superintendent, need to have the board assign it, not individuals. That doesn't mean you can't call at any time, speak with the superintendent, who is your employee, deal with issues one-on-one with the superintendent. But otherwise, your authority is just like the authority that parents would have when they come in, and you do not give up your role as a parent or as a citizen. So, if your child has an issue in a school, and you're in school that day to deal with your child, make sure that the people that you're dealing with know that I'm here as the parent of these children or this child. Never use the term, "Do you know who I am?" Trust me, they know who you are. But it can be intimidating for some people, and you don't want our friends at the Ethics Commission coming down on you for doing that. Now, key to being effective: knowing what you can do, knowing what you may do, knowing what you must do, and then knowing what you should do. By that, I mean, you know, you must be prudent in developing the district's budget. You must be diligent in following the open meeting law and the ethics law. You must follow rules of order, whatever you happen to do. Those are sort of musts. You may, or you can, call your colleague an idiot at a school committee meeting. You can. Free speech.
Can I do it now? No, I'm just kidding. I was like, no, still not. The timing was perfect.
It's not smart. You can write a letter to the Fall River Herald and say, "I'm the only member of Fall River School Committee who cares about children." You can do that, and you may do that because it's freedom of the press, but it gets you in really big trouble. You can go onto social media, although executive sessions are private and legally executive session, you can put all kinds of stuff on social media. Some stuff that may be inappropriate. You've got to think about what you should do, how you should use your time, as opposed to what you must do or what you may do. That's key: using the best judgment. School committee members, by the way, who know the rules and who understand the importance of policy, know you can get to anything through policy. And I would suggest to you, if you haven't done this, I have these parliamentary procedure cheat cards that tell you about motions and how to proceed, and if you'd like, we can come back and do some training in parliamentary procedure, because he or she who knows the rules has a distinct advantage over the people that don't. Now, what's a school committee? There are two houses of government in Fall River: the city council and the school committee. You're the legislative branch of government of Fall River for schools, and the executive branch is sitting right here. But there are also checks and balances. So, in most of our cities, the chief executive officer of the city sits on the school committee. And that doesn't happen in towns. And when I talk to my colleagues in other parts of the country, "Really? The mayor's on the school board? How does that work?" And I'm just telling you, I'm not saying this because the mayor's here. I served with the mayor on the school board. It's a very important and advantageous thing to have, because that means the executive side of the city has to be exposed to all the issues that exist on the legislative side with the school board. So, we found most of our mayors very supportive of schools and school budgets, and a lot of it has to do with being at the school committee meeting. But you're the legislature for schools. So, what do legislatures do? Well, they do a couple of things. They set their own rules and procedures. I'm assuming you have rules and procedures, parliamentary procedures. Use Robert's Rules?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It's a good idea to get a cheat sheet, and if you want a booklet that describes Robert's Rules in brief, just send me an email, and we'll send them down to you. You've got all kinds of resources for that. You also... You know, like the state legislature sets the law? Well, you make the rules in Fall River, the law for schools as it is, except in your case, the rules are policy, school district policies. Now, I know you've got a policy manual. I know there are all kinds of policies in it. There are hundreds and hundreds of different policies that school districts might have. If we were in Berkshire County right now, we might have a question about farm animals in classrooms, because they have four age groups. You might have policies about attendance, grading, masking policies, which you'll be looking at, temporary policies that you adopted during COVID, all kinds of different policies that you might have. We have access to the national policy database. I can find anything for you. If you're thinking about a policy that you might need, you might want to check in with us, because we can advise you on who's already done it. Most school committees ask the superintendent to develop a policy proposal for them and to develop a budget for them to debate. That's how it starts. But just like all money bills originate in the House of Representatives, in Fall River, the school budget originates with the school committee and the superintendent. Unlike most legislatures in this country, you hire the chief executive. So, the chief executive for the city is on the school committee, the chief executive for schools is here in the boardroom with you, hired by you, evaluated by you, contracted with by the school committee. And you can't delegate that. You can have a search committee that's not all school committee members, but the hiring and evaluation of the superintendent is the school committee's responsibility. You set the budget. The budget is a very complex document. We'll get to that. There are thousands of lines of data in a school budget, and school committees will determine their proposed budget based on recommendations from the superintendent. That budget will go to the mayor and the city council. It will come back to you in final form, and you tell the superintendent how you want to manage that budget. So, for example, on my school committee, we had... I'm making this up, but we had $50 million, and we put that $50 million in nine different places: administrators, educators, support staff, supplies and equipment, fuel, travel, out-of-state travel, consultants, whatever it might be. And basically, said the money's in nine different accounts. If you need to move it, come back to us, and we'll approve moving the money around in the big picture. Some of the minutia of a budget is generally left to the superintendent in terms of the number of people, wherever the people are assigned and things like that. There's, you know, there is... You joke about this in Boston: the F-word. The F-word is February. The A-word is August. But there's the M-word, and I don't use it, but I'm going to tell you what it is. It's micromanagement. I don't use the word "micromanagement" because sometimes it's a bullying term. You're micromanaging, don't whatever. But there are school committee members who get in the way of day-to-day operations, and there are superintendents who don't tell their school committees everything, too. So, there's a balance that needs to happen. Another word I don't use... You said you are a counselor, and you work with...
I work at the DTA, welfare department, essentially.
Okay. I used to run a children's mental health center. I know what dysfunction is. Disagreement is not dysfunction. So, if somebody says, "Oh, the school committee's dysfunctional," we don't allow that word to be used, because I think it's a term that gets abused and gives our members a bad name. The other word that, just so that you know that we don't use, you know, when I come down here for a long ride, I usually stop at Starbucks and get a Hershey bar and mix it together and keeps you awake. Starbucks is a really robust coffee. Food is robust. An evaluation system, a curriculum system, is not robust. When you hear the word "robust" thrown around in academic setting, be assured that a bullshit storm is about to start. We do not use the word "robust." Anytime my staff hears the word "robust," they turn and look at me, and they hear, "Ah." You know, we just don't deal with it, so think about that. Also, are there any attorneys in the room? No? Okay. I need to alert you to something. By virtue of being elected to the school committee, you have become legally a public figure. Let me explain what that means. Do you watch Saturday Night Live? Do you see what they say about various political leaders, personal leaders, and others, how merciless they are about it? You wonder why they never get sued? They don't get sued because they talk about public figures. And under the Supreme Judicial Court's rulings in Massachusetts, elected officials and the superintendent are public figures. So, if I want to write a letter to the Fall River Herald and say, "Terry Smith, the member of the Fall River School Committee, is the stupidest human being I've ever seen, is so stupid that Terry can't add up a column of numbers, is so stupid I don't know how Terry finds their way home at the end of the day, and by the way, is a big fat pig." I can say that, because they're public figures. So, if you've never been criticized in public before, get used to it, because you could be criticized in public. And if the press wants to print something about you, and you feel it's misleading, whatever it is, you know, you can write a letter to the editor and challenge them if you want to make a two-day story out of a one-day bad... Just think about it. In Massachusetts, freedom of the press is one of the basic freedoms. And you know in the First Amendment, there's freedom of the press, freedom of speech, freedom of religion, freedom to assemble. And you know what the last one is? The right to petition your government for redress of grievances. Who's the government for schools in Fall River? You are. So, any of your constituents who wish to call you, you're probably finding this out now if you're new, anyone who wishes to call you and discharge the contents of their mind and complain to you has every right to do it. So, listen respectfully if a constituent calls you. Refer the complaint to the superintendent. If somebody comes to you and says, "My kid is a fourth grader in the Smith School..." You don't have a Smith School. Good. "...in the Smith School. The teacher's terrible, or what are you going to do?" In the old days, we might have gone in as a school committee member and had a talk with the principal. Now, that would be a violation of the chain of command. You have to report the complaint to the superintendent, who may not be able to tell you what she's doing about that complaint. The complaining parent can call you anytime they like. You can talk to them. You know, frankly, if you want to, you can talk to anybody you like. You can call up a principal in the school district and have a conversation. It's just calling faculty members is an invitation for trouble. Speaking to administrators outside of an official function is an invitation for trouble. So, we urge you to be very... You know, it's one of those things that you may do, because there's free speech, but what you should do is exercise great caution. You lose control of what comes out of your mouth the minute it leaves your mouth. And as I said, get used to being criticized in public, because in Massachusetts, it's a sport. And there's the balance of power. So, balance of power. The mayor's on the school committee. The city council approves your budget. The school committee majority can overrule the chair if it wishes. Balancing of power in municipal government is inherent in keeping things together. And as I said, knowing what you should do, doing your homework, knowing the issues, makes you very, very effective and very credible. Your other duties... Oh, the state constitution, by the way, says not only can the constituents call you, they can give you instructions about how to do your job. You don't have to do what they tell you. And you know, every conversation is going to open up with the biggest lie that you're told, which is, "I voted for you." How many people... I got 600 votes, but 10,000 people told me they voted for me. So, listening to your constituents is very important. One of the most important elements of an elected board is that the public has the sense that it is being heard, because you can speak to them, and they can watch what you do. You have some hiring responsibilities that I'm going to talk to you about. Goal-setting and strategic planning goes through the school committee. Your district policies from the school committee. School improvement plans are reviewed by the school committee. The superintendent will be sharing those with you. And one other quick question: have any of you ever engaged in collective bargaining or union negotiations? Obviously, you have. Are you... Have you...
I'm part of my union with the DTA. I'm a worker for that as well.
Okay. Okay. So, collective bargaining. Collective bargaining is done under the authority of the school committee. Now, depending upon where you are, in some of our bigger cities, the attorney for the district will be heavily involved in collective bargaining. The superintendent or your chief business officer or personnel officer will do that. They'll get... Follow the goals of the school committee. They'll get directions from you, and they'll pursue those goals in collective bargaining. Sometimes the school committee members sit at the table. Did I... Now, if you're in western Massachusetts, we've got districts with 120 people in them. We've got one district with one kid, small districts where... Small districts where three members of the school committee sit around the cafeteria table with the union and try to hammer out a contract. And then in cities, it's a big, it's a big production. So it depends on where you are, and we'll talk a little bit about that role. Personnel functions. You hire, contract with the superintendent and you evaluate the superintendent. You hire your legal counsel. Now, I always advise people, don't look for trouble where no trouble exists. So when I say, you know, if you don't like your legal counsel, you can get another one. You can do that. I'm not suggesting that you do that, but I'm just saying, legal counsel works for the school committee. Now, your legal counsel is?
Through Sasa.
Through Sasa, okay. So, he knows what he's doing. Important thing to know about your legal counsel. If you think that you may be about to do something that might get you in trouble with all good intents, if you think that you may have a legal conflict of interest, if you think that you might risk violating the open meeting law and you contact your legal counsel for guidance, that advice is protected by attorney-client privilege. So, whatever your protocol is for reaching out to your legal counsel, he can advise you in confidence about issues that involve you and the school district. He can't help you buy a house, but he can advise you, and that's protected conversation. The school committee confirms the appointments of assistant superintendents, deputy superintendents, whatever the superintendent title may be. You approve the appointment of the school business manager or whoever the chief financial officer is, and that's because you have a fiduciary responsibility. And the people who manage the money are, among others, the business manager. The special education director is also approved by the school committee. And school physicians, nurses and attendance officers as well come under the authority of the school committee for confirmation. And you set the district personnel policy under which they work, such as collective bargaining or policies that relate to non-union personnel. Your approval of these people who would be recommended to you cannot be unreasonably withheld. So if the superintendent recommends, and again, I'm just making this up as a hypothetical, recommends somebody to be the special education director and you say, "This person's never had experience as a sped director, but there were four candidates who were very experienced in sped directing. I'm not confident in this candidate." That would be reasonable. But if somebody's called you and says, "I want you to defeat this candidate so that I'll be next in line," that would be unreasonable. And we actually had someone once who said in public, "Why are you recommending her to be the sped director? Don't we already have enough women in the central office?" Now, okay, quiz time. What's wrong with that? There's more wrong with it than you think. I know the behavioralists refer to this as wait time. You know, it's illegal. Discrimination on the basis of sex. It's stupid, but that's not necessarily problematic. The key is that it's a civil rights violation. And if you violate somebody's civil rights, you will be personally liable. Otherwise, if somebody sues the district, they'll sue the district, they won't sue you personally. So that's where, as I said, if you think there's a problem, you call your legal counsel and it's a conversation protected by attorney-client privilege. Now, the superintendent has clear, legal and discreet authority over the day-to-day operations of the school district. If there's a ticket on my car. Superintendent manages the schools day-to-day, has authority over all personnel. Now, teachers in the school buildings report to the principal, who reports to the superintendent. So, in one way or another, the superintendent has authority over the personnel and the district.
Can I ask your question on that?
Yes, please.
Did you just say that all principals work directly for the superintendent?
Well, the principals might report to an assistant superintendent who might then report to the superintendent. But any action taken by a subordinate to the superintendent is subject to the review of the superintendent.
So in essence, the same.
Okay. Superintendent implements your policies and implements your budget. And she manages the budget approved by the school committee. Now, the authority of the school committee on budgeting is fairly general. So I say the superintendent will present to you a recommendation. You may approve not only the dollars, but there might be language that goes with that. For example, Weymouth a couple of years ago put sixty thousand dollars in the athletic budget for the express purpose of promoting opportunities for females in middle school and below. Their goal was?
Excuse me?
To create physically fit kids, start in the lower grades, teach them competitive sports and build a good program, feeder system into the high school. But it was a deliberate, and that's where the superintendent spent the money. So, in a general way, language goes into the budget and numbers go into the budget. And the superintendent has authority within the budget that you have set to make the day-to-day decisions necessary to run the school district. So that's the authority of the superintendent, as I say, it's very broad. We have been very lucky that there have been very few cases that have ever gone outside a school district over the authority of the superintendent and the school committee. We sort of don't want judges helping to interpret the roles and responsibilities because the law, and I believe you have all been provided with one of these. This is General Laws for Education. The law says you make policy and the superintendent has general oversight of the district. Everything else, we've filled in over the years. So, sometimes there are situations when the role of the superintendent and the role of the school committee become vague. And that's where we get a lot of questions about whose authority is in play. It can be as simple as, who gives out the diplomas at graduation? We've had that battle in some districts. Who has authority over masking versus not masking? How about the fine-tuning of the masking question? I would just throw out to you, and you know, either the lines get blurry or the blue of the school committee and the green of the superintendent become yellow 'cause you can't figure out which one it is. Are there any examples that any of you have experienced that reflect disagreements over roles and responsibilities? 'Cause they come up all the time.
I have one.
Go ahead. Can you be nice and loud, 'cause these masks make it?
Sure, no problem. So I had a question on the budget. The responsibility of the school committee related to the budget and the line items. This has been an issue for fifteen years in this district. School committees have the right, because I've been on them where we actually set parameters. How many FTEs? We can determine how tight it wants to be, or is it open? So we've had situations where superintendents in the past have told us, "No, that's not your role." And the school committee can go back and forth and then the majority members of the school committee say, "No, we don't care, we don't wanna do any line items, we'll just let them do whatever they want." Because it's told by the superintendent that we don't have that response, we don't have that right to make that decision. So that's one that's a very clear one and it, I feel strongly that we should.
There is an interesting right of the superintendent. You may fund certain things. She may elect not to spend the money. So there are cases where school committees have created, and let's say the Weymouth case, where they might've created additional coaching responsibilities at the middle school. Superintendent could have said, "I know that's where you wanna spend the money, but I don't feel we need to spend it." And then it becomes an issue for the school committee and the superintendent to work out. Sometimes we see situations where superintendent wants to reorganize with regard to personnel and the law gives the superintendent the authority to reorganize. But, for example, if the school committee said, "We wanna have three math coaches in the middle school" and the superintendent felt that that wasn't the best strategy, only if the school committee absolutely directed her to do that, would she have to do it. And then she would not necessarily have to fill the positions. Now, when you have superintendents who tell the school committee, "I know what you put there and we can't do it," then the school committee and the superintendent can have that conversation. But the fine detail of budgeting is something that most school committees don't do because they just don't have that kind of knowledge. However, as I say, there are some things that you may do, some things that you should do. You gotta be very careful about specifying the micro detail of where the personnel go. Because that, the overall management authority of the superintendent can be compromised by anything the school committee might do in the detail of its budget. The same way in collective bargaining. When you're negotiating a contract, you can't negotiate provisions into the contract or put provisions into the budget that impair the superintendent's ability to put whoever the superintendent feels is the most appropriate person at the appropriate time in the position. Trying to be really careful about pronouns here 'cause I'm from Cambridge and we're very politically correct. My pronoun is "it," according to my grantship.
Can I call off on that?
Yeah, please.
Just to clarify what I was meaning. So we currently have, we had a lot of policies that were very clear. School committee said, "We're gonna hire, we have eight hundred employees in the district, in our budget." We divide those up at budget time, X amount per place, so we would set the number. They got rid of those policies in the prior school committee and the last school committee didn't wanna take that responsibility back to say, "No, we can't, just because we have the money doesn't mean you should hire extra people." That's binding us to further, you know, so if you had a bunch of people at top step making ninety thousand dollars, ten people, and five of those people retired and you were gonna pay them forty-five. We, in my opinion, have a fiduciary responsibility to say, "We can only still hire ten people." What the last superintendent wanted to do was say, "No, we can hire, because we got the money, we can hire nine people." So now we have fourteen. And without the authority of the school committee, that's where I, the rub was coming in there. We can actually say, correct, we can set the number of FTEs in the budget by policy.
That's a risky tactic because that can get in the way of the superintendent's ability to manage the money. So what I would suggest to you is, if the school committee itself as a body creates a very specific definition, that you could probably sustain. But once the year starts, I mean, there are districts, and I think Plymouth is one of them, they have a hundred line items in their budget. I could be wrong, but it was at one time. Ten buildings, ten lines for each building. And if the superintendent needed to move money from building A to building D, the school committee would step in and approve that. I don't know whether they still do it, but that particular detail would sort of control what you're asking about in terms of moving stuff from one to another. But over the course of the year, there are too many variables that can hit you and you don't know what you're gonna do. If, for example, we had, you know, the month of February and the first part of March was freezing cold beyond any expectations and your fuel bill ran dry, you'd have to get it from someplace. If, you know, one of our schools cyclone blew the roof off of the high school. You need to replace the roof, you've gotta find the money someplace. You've gotta have the flexibility to do it, to do what you need to do.
But that's the opposite.
Yeah?
What I'm talking about is spending more money than what they have. So, I just think it needs to be clear because at some point, this committee's gonna have to vote on whether we wanna do a budget that just says, "Here, you can do whatever you want, hire who you want." Or we're gonna take time to go through and say we should have, each school should have a certain amount. But what I don't wanna leave here with, because it's a training by you, is to have the chairman of the committee, like he did last time, be able to try to tell the committee members, "We don't have a right to do this, we just let them do what they want." We have a right. Whether it's a smart thing to do or not is up to each member. But I don't wanna leave it wishy-washy.
But it's not the best judgment to do it. I'll make that editorial comment.
Yeah.
It's not the best way to do business and it's risky to do that.
I would disagree.
But yes, legally, legally, with a literal letter of the law and a fiduciary responsibility, you can micromanage that budget as tightly as you want. Almost nobody does it anymore. It's all done in big blocks, but.
You could be in the middle somewhere. That's what I, thank you.
Some examples. Contact with faculty. Free speech is your right, but it's a dangerous tactic to deploy if you're, you know what? Don't ever, if someone calls you and says, "I have to go in for my kid's IEP meeting, I'd love you to accompany me to the IEP meeting." That's very dangerous for a couple of reasons. One of them is it's using your position beyond the scope of authority. And that will get you in trouble. And the operative case where this occurred was when a member of a school committee said to a superintendent, "I want you and I to work out my child's placement and let's not go through the IEP process." And that cost each of them four thousand dollars apiece in fines from the Ethics Commission. So, for, and running the chain of command.
That's a very tricky situation for me. That, it's a very tricky situation for me in my role.
Okay.
Because that's part of what I do as a, that's actually a big chunk of.
Right. And if your work requires you to do that, then you just file a disclosure and says, "I'm here in my capacity as the child's case officer to look out for the interests of the child." But you may want to, you can call the Ethics Commission if you have a question. A live person answers the phone. Of course, you call your legal counsel first, 'cause that's confidential. If you call the Ethics Commission, they'll respond to you and they'll advise you. They won't advise you about anybody else, but they will advise you about you. And there are situations where representing someone before the city might not be permitted. So, you just wanna be careful and check it out first. There are a lot of people like you who work in social service agencies in the community and they figure out how to do it and just disclose.
Go ahead, let me just make one comment.
Bruce, please.
We've run into that situation several times over the years and my advice has always been to contact the Ethics Commission. One thing about the Ethics Commission, they will not talk to anyone but the person herself or himself. As a matter of fact, before they even talk to your counsel, they have to get your authority to do something. So that the best and most efficient way of doing it is what Glenn mentioned. Is pick up the phone and call them, because they're always there. And they're always gonna, they're always gonna answer your call and they'll initially, at least most times, will give you a verbal and then they can follow it up with something and write in for you. But that's the best way to do it.
But if you call him first and he tells you, "You shouldn't be doing that," then your best advice is to stop doing it rather than alerting the regulatory side, you know, just stop doing what's wrong. Because you might then continue to do something that's wrong and create a problem. And your legal counsel can advise you on how to pose the questions. We're not hiding anything from the Ethics Commission, but a lot of people do things in very good faith that they don't realize, you know, brings about some conflicts. And the Ethics Commission is frequently finding new, new, different types of violations and they let us know about them. Intervening on hiring and assignments. It's used to go on all the time, it's now very much illegal. Calling the superintendent to say, "I got somebody who needs a job, I want this person put to work." "I got somebody who needs a job, I want this person put to work." That happened everywhere prior to 1993. It happens less now, it's not supposed to happen at all. Advocating for students is a big role for school committee members. Just make sure that when you advocate for students, you're advocating for all students. And if you decide to go in and advocate for your own children exclusively, do it as a parent, not as a school committee member. But don't stop advocating for kids in general. There's an issue around exempting individuals from policies. If there are going to be exemptions, you know, put it in your policy and give it to the superintendent. Don't do it at a school committee meeting. And let me tell you what I mean. If I have a child who's going to enter the Fall River Public Schools, how old does that child have to be?
Six.
How old?
Five.
Five, by when?
By September 1st.
September 1st or August 3rd?
August 33rd.
It's a big difference.
August 33rd, yes.
Because in a district, it's big. I guarantee you, you've probably got five kids who were born September 1st.
Absolutely.
And then there's five kids behind them born September 7th. And we had a kid, when I was on the school committee, mother shows up with reams of, you know, the psychiatrist who's assessed my kid, says, "The next Einstein." "This kid reads books, this kid speaks several languages, but his birthday is one day too late." "Are you really going to be that fussy and not let him start kindergarten? This kid is going to be in the third grade by next year?" You know, you couldn't make an exception, because there are four kids waiting outside to come in next. So just be really careful on exceptions to your policy. And if you're going to have them, give the superintendent the authority to grant them. Special education, I talked about in terms of your role. Union negotiations, it's a very formal dance on union negotiations. Collective bargaining is a whole other set of things to learn. It's, collective bargaining is, I liken it to sort of criminal prosecution. There are formal roles for each side of the courtroom. You are management's side of the table. You are never labor's side of the table in your role as a school committee member. As sympathetic as you may feel to the unions, you're the management side. And collective bargaining is done under the formal rules of collective bargaining, which I think are more complicated than the IRS code. That's why you never want to go to the bargaining table without expert guidance at your side. Okay, so we talked about some of the things that you shouldn't do, even though they're not necessarily illegal. Dangerous conversations, repeating. I'm sure some of you have had this experience where the constituents call you, and they don't like the answer, and they ask you again, and they don't like it repeated, so they ask a third time. See, this happens to us all the time, that's why we have the three-question rule in ASC. We'll answer the same question once, and then we'll answer it twice. If you ask the same question again, we give you a warning. And if you ask it the fourth time, we terminate the call. Because you've got people that don't take no for an answer. And that's part of your life, got to be polite. Listen respectfully for as long as you can. Your conversations are highly likely to be misinterpreted, especially if someone wants to hear something that you didn't say, but really wants to hear it. So I've referenced all of these different functions and given them to you in writing, so that you can study them, think about them. And if you have any questions, you can call us. The temptation to yield to the moment. Have you had big, big meetings where all kinds of people have turned up? Or have you been lucky?
Occasionally.
Occasionally? I'm talking like 100 people, 200 people, and they were all very upset and...
No.
You have no, okay. Everyone decides to show up at the school committee and, okay, good for you. Because the rule of thirds applies at those meetings. A third of the people come for attention. A third of the people come for therapy, because it can be very cathartic. And a third of the people come to try to help you out. But the other interesting thing is that nobody listens to anybody else. I mean, how much of it can you take? So be as polite as you can, let people be heard. After they've been heard, you can move on. With special education, roles of the school committee are to know that your district policies are in place. You don't need to be special educators, you don't need to know how it works. You don't need to know anything about behavioral health. You just need to know that your policies, see if I can do that. Your policies need to make sure that parents and students have the opportunity to plan the services for their child, that services are free and appropriate, that students have the right to participate in the planning for their child, and you have the right to all the information and documentation that you may need. Now, I guarantee that your district policies are in place. And the reason I guarantee that is because when the state comes in looking, if they don't find them, you will know. So don't look for trouble where no trouble exists. Just remember that your parents are often single-issue constituents. They care about their own children. They care about everybody, but they really care about their own children. And parents can be very passionate when their children have special needs. So you need to be really understanding of people who bring these concerns to your attention. Just don't try to fix them for them other than referring them to the appropriate, the appropriate people. Talked about this, talked about your policy. Real quick on collective bargaining. Who's at the table?
Myself, the superintendent, HR director, and the CFO, as well as all the staff.
Okay. Is there ever a situation where it gets to the point where the school committee is involved?
Over the last 20 some odd years, we've had a couple of occasions where the committee gets involved, but not lately.
Okay. So the school committee sets its goals and policies. You put them into your budget. You give them to the people who do your collective bargaining, and hopefully things work smoothly. Cities and towns have consistent histories of labor relations. Some are smooth and peaceable, and everything moves along quickly. Others are always contentious. If you have labor peace, don't look for trouble. If you don't have labor peace, I would just ask you to keep in mind that there are some things about collective bargaining that you want to make sure that you just pay attention to. And one of them is, the bargaining is done in bargaining session. It's not done in public. And it's done in bargaining sessions for a reason. And one of those reasons is that state and federal law require it. You don't want to turn bargaining into, into a circus. You have to prepare, you need to be as reasonable as you can be. You're never working without a contract, because when your contract expires, if you haven't negotiated a new one, the old one stays in effect until the new one is negotiated. Now, this is sort of a personal anecdote, but one of my children is a teacher in a school district that will not be named, because I don't want the Brookline people to get angry with her. And she comes in one Saturday, and she confronts me, and she said, "Do you know what? We're working without a contract." And I said, "And I bet morale has never been as low." "She's right." And I said, "And I bet you don't feel respected as teachers." "That's right." "And I bet this is not acceptable to you." "She's, that's right, how did you know?" I said, "Becky, I got the playbook. Those talking points, right out of the playbook." "Oh, and the union's not, the school committee's not bargaining in good faith, right? Right, they're not bargaining in good faith." Okay. Be prepared if things stall. They will argue that, you know, you're not bargaining in good faith, morale's never... Talking points that are consistent. It's designed to be part of the collective bargaining process. Ultimately, everybody comes together. Ultimately, you will get a new contract arrangement. Just a couple of other things that I did want to point out to you. If the, if the school committee has a pit bull as an attorney, the union has to accept the pit bull. If the union has a pit bull as its rep from, from the parent union, you have to accept who they send as their representative. You get to pick your legal counsel, they get to pick theirs. It's like a criminal case. The DA doesn't get to pick the defense attorney, and the defense doesn't get to pick the DA. And bargaining is done at the bargaining table. So if things stall, and somebody says to you, "You can't trust him, she won't tell you the truth. Meet me at Dunkin' Donuts, and we'll settle this." That's an unfair labor practice. Bargaining's done at the bargaining table by the bargaining team. Don't bargain outside the realm of the team. And whatever you do, don't threaten anybody. I will tell you, I was witness, in my days as a school committee, to a school committee member who told a member of the bargaining team, "I know you want to be an assistant principal. It's never going to happen. I will see to it that you are stuck in that classroom for the rest of your life." Well, that's a real threat. And, you know, as opposed to a rhetorical threat, which is, "I'm ready to kill you." "Well, I'm not going to kill you, you know that." So there is that as an issue. So a couple of things about the open meeting law. Sort of the Reader's Digest version of things that you need to make sure you know. Your secretary or the superintendent will make sure that your meetings are posted 48 hours ahead of time, exclusive of Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays. So everyone will know when you're going to meet. The public has the right to know that. The secretary will take your minutes. The minutes will be approved by the school committee eventually, and they will be public. And the public has the right to attend your meetings, except for the executive sessions. The agenda has to include what the chair reasonably anticipates will be discussed at the meeting. Now, yesterday, for example, the evening after the governor made his announcement on masks, school committee suddenly found, "Oh, here's an issue that the chair couldn't anticipate. It wasn't on our agenda, but you could talk about it, because the chair couldn't anticipate it coming up." So the public, so it has the right to know what you're going to be talking about, except in really urgent situations. Deliberation takes place in the committee meeting room. Deliberation means, in this case, discussions about anything relevant to the school committee or its work. And it means that a majority of you can only discuss school-related issues at a school committee meeting. Now, I'm going to make something up. And let's say someone is proposing that elementary foreign language instruction be taught in Fall River. I don't know why that's happening. It's a reminder of something, but I think it's reminding me about Fall River, because I thought this meeting was at 6:30 yesterday. Sorry about that. Oh, elementary foreign language, do you offer it here?
Not elementary.
K to 6. Let's say you wanted to offer elementary foreign language. Well, whose decision is it about whether to add a new program to the Fall River Public Schools? It's policy. It's a new program. It requires an appropriation. Is it administration or policy? I would say to create a new program, it's policy. What about the selection of the language that you're going to teach? Anybody want to weigh in? Anyone want to guess? Well, don't guess, there's no right answer. Because superintendents have argued that's administrative, and school committee members have argued that's policy. In one of our communities, and I'm going to say it was New Bedford, and I'm going to say it was a while back, someone was suggesting French. Someone was suggesting Spanish, because it's the second most frequently spoken language in the Commonwealth. And, and then someone suggested, "Yeah, but in New Bedford, Portuguese is the second most frequently spoken language, and that's the culture that we want to preserve." And because the policy question, because the question involved the entire community and had implications for the entire community, the school committee determined it was a policy question. Now, you could argue that either way. My goal is to keep those questions out of the courtroom. And whenever we've asked our attorneys about, you know, "What's the rule for defining policy versus administration in those cases?" The same answer we always get is, "You have to work it out." So, you know, we know that there's a problem in a district when every week we're getting one or two calls from the same district saying, "Who's in charge of this, who's in charge of that?" And it's never good. So working it out is important. Now, you may, under certain circumstances, convene an executive session, which is legally private, and it's allowed for very specific purposes. To go into executive session, first of all, you have to convene in public. The chair has to explain why you're convening an executive session, protecting any individuals who need to be protected. Then you take a roll call to go into an executive session, and the chair indicates whether or not you'll be coming back out. So if you, because you don't want everybody to go home, and then you come out of the session, and that's when you change the bus stops. When you can go into executive session for certain reasons, I've given you a full page on this one, because the type is too small. In order to discuss somebody's character and reputation, or physical and mental health, or to discuss discipline or dismissal or complaints about a municipal official. Now, in those cases, the people you're talking about need 48 hours notice. They're entitled to be represented. They're entitled to speak on their own behalf, and they're entitled to record the meeting. Just an interesting bit of trivia. This 48 hours includes Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, as opposed to calling the meeting, which excludes Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays. You can go into executive session to talk about collective bargaining strategy or to negotiate litigation or to talk about bargaining parameters for people who don't have collective bargaining rights, such as the superintendent or most of the people under contract. If you're going to deploy security devices, you don't want the bad guys to know where they are. So that can be an executive session. To investigate charges of criminal misconduct, because you don't necessarily want the bad guys to know that you're on to them. Purchasing, leasing, or exchanging real property, you don't want to give your bargaining position away. To comply with any other general or special laws that require you to be in executive session. Anything related to privacy, legitimate privacy, collective bargaining. The law, labor law, requires it. Meeting with a mediator. Superintendent search committees can meet in an executive session. And patents and trademarks. Very rarely do we ever have any involvement with patents and trademarks, although I'm told sometimes the red sauce in the high school cafeteria is so good, they don't want anybody to take it apart. I know that if you're, if you are new school committee members, you've been through the Ethics Commission briefing, so you've seen all of that. I'm going to just show you one thing that you want to keep, be mindful of. Oh, you take a bribe, you go to jail. End of discussion. We've had some classics. It's a sensitive subject, but they're... The bribe has a legal cousin, which is a gratuity, a gift. It's got to be $50 or less, no strings attached. No pro quo. We do a separate workshop exclusively on the open meeting law, and we'd be happy to do that. And of course, if your immediate family member or business partner is involved in something before the school committee or someone with whom you're negotiating employment, you should not participate. You should excuse yourself. You should leave the room. But let me just show you who your immediate family is. This is the last thing I'm going to show you. And this is the last thing I'm going to show you. The immediate family is you and your spouse or partner. They're immediate family. And for both of you, your parents, your children, and your siblings. Now, think about this. My wife's brother was a conflict of interest. My sister's husband is not. Because my sister's husband is not my or my sister's parent, children, or siblings. So the brother-in-law, sister-in-law could be a conflict of interest. You want to be careful. You know who's not up there? Cousins, uncles, aunts, grandparents, grandchildren. They're, they're who they are. So I'm going to stick around. If anybody has any specific questions around roles and responsibilities, to answer your questions. But giving you the, yes.
Just real quick, Glenn, will you have, or send us emails regarding any kind of other maybe workshops that you might be having in the future?
Yeah.
You can be part of that virtually or?
Yeah, virtually, I will come down. We do, we do very elaborate stuff on budgeting, on Chapter 70 funding, open meeting law, various elements of team building, sometimes state and federal legislation, whatever, whatever people need.
That'd be good.
Okay. Some of you are going to complete some more have... Who's new?
I think you should have.
Okay, I will take, see me before you leave. You have the stick drives I gave the new people. Those are deep resources, extensive resources on everything we've talked about. It's a four gigabyte stick drive. We only use half a gig, so you get three and a half complimentary gigs on the stick drive. You can save whatever you, whatever you feel you need to save.
If I could just take a minute. Maureen LaCroix is here. She is my, my coach from the new superintendent's induction program, which I'm part of. First-year superintendents are assigned a coach. And she's been for this year, my coach is my mentor, former principal and superintendent.
In Bedford?
In Bedford.
In Bedford?
Yes.
Yep, that's time for you to go.
No, that was the line, that was the line. I heard the word Bedford and got all the stuff. So I'll stay and answer questions informally for you. The four of you who are new, I just want to see you for a second before you go and I'll give you some further documentation. Anybody not get this book? You got this book? Go ahead.
Yeah, everybody got it.
Okay. You know what this is worth on the street? This is, it's less than $50 in value, so you can take it.
Do you have to end the meeting, Paul?
Oh, we do parliamentary procedure.
Yeah.
I just wanted, are we going to hear from, are you speaking, or?
Uh, no.
Oh, no. I thought before you were saying...
Yeah, I just wanted to be introduced to the committee.
Oh, sure.
And let you know that I'm...
Nice to meet you.
Yep, absolutely.
And really thank Glenn and all of you for putting the time in for this tonight. I work with superintendents in a number of districts in the state and understanding, so I'll take it from a superintendent perspective because it's my strongest point of view here. From my perspective, the working relationship between individuals and the body of the school committee is just critical to the success of the system. So really, commend you for doing this and thank you and Glenn for doing such a nice job. It's so important.
No, thank you very much for being here. Appreciate it. And Glenn, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good seeing you again.
More than likely have questions for you afterwards as well.
No problem.
But is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Second, road call?
Mr. Agnew?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Larterly?
Yes.
Or R?
Yep.
Mr. Gabbard?
Mimi?
No.
Mimi, adjourn.